... Denry and lead us notification.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the love of our homeland, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will further with your in heaven. Dear Lord God, it is once again that we come before you in your presence to thank you for all your many blessings you bestowed upon the city of Dillon. Dear Lord God, I wish that you continue to bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and the department heads on tonight as we gather to make, to continue to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray to be kept to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. But it's in the precious name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody here this evening. Thank you all for coming. We need to make a slight modification to the agenda. We've got an executive session on personnel matter. We'll also have to add a contractual matter also. All favorits opposed. Approval of minutes of the regular scheduled, May 11th, 2015, regular scheduled meeting, and also the June 1st, 2015 budget workshop. All favorits opposed. You know, I've just got just a couple of minutes. Just kind of want to review a little bit of what the budget workshop was in case you didn't and you can get what I don't. As far as the budget, those of you that weren't here, the general fund, we're looking at about a 2% increase over last year. The general fund budget this coming fiscal year will be a pad over $5 million, $5,95,000 to be exact. Water sewer damage will be about $3.6 million. Buying the two about $8.6. The budget includes a $500 pay increase for each employee. Total cost of that pay increase is roughly $34,000 on the general fund side, about $9,500 on the water sewer side. Will be a slight increase in the garbage rates. Residential garbage carts are going from $21.52 to $21.95, so it's about a 40 cent increase. It's 2% CPI adjusted increase on the, on the water sewer. I think Lynn gave an example of 5,000 gallons if you use, your current rate would be about $35.66, which would increase less than a dollar to $36.35. Some big ticket items we were looking at are air packs for the fire department. Been decided on, purchase 10 additional air packs at approximately $65,000. U car for stove department, $10,000 for a front loader for a garbage truck, and $30,000 into recreation fund for recreation department, which $15,000 of that is for more, and another 15 for additional equipment for carts. 2 cent hospitality fund, which funds, a lot of our stuff from, obviously from a recreation standpoint, has continued to be strong. We have a $467,000 balance in there with one more month going to fiscal year. I think that will even get stronger with additional restaurants we've got upcoming, and also the refinancing we did on that, that bond. We'll save some. So, I'd like to make a note to department heads, y'all would help Lynn, the council, on what y'all think will do to help the city. As far as the budget, we can certainly use part of those savings for y'all. I ask you to please get involved. And the last thing I'd like to close with is remember Mr. E.C. Carr, I think E.C. had, he passed away last week. I think he was 18 years on council, close to that. I think he served as mayor for Tim. Our thoughts and prayers would be with the E.C. Carr family. That flight, that funeral was last Friday. Also, remember Boeby lost his brother Gerald. Gerald did a lot in the recreation department also for kids out here, school age kids with football and all kinds of things. Gerald is a couple of years younger than me. I played football with Gerald. Very good person, good athlete, but a better person. So, Boeby, we also lift you up in our career also, somewhere else in here. And with Lynn, that's, that's all I have.
Well, I'll follow up on, on your open view of the proposed budget, which I had first reading this shortly in our, in our meeting. Based on our public, on our workshop last week, we discussed the air packs in the fire department. We had a number in there, I think $57,000 to purchase 10. On Tuesday, fire chief got some bids to purchase, well, in the backup, we had $57,000 in the budget for air packs. To purchase 10, but the numbers that we got were based on 30 air packs. So, Keith, we got in contact with those three vendors on Tuesday. They resubmitted their bids. We're going to add $8,000 to the capital purchase on the 10 air packs, went from $57,000 to The lowest bid is, is $65,000, the highest bid is $70,000. And then I think there's one $100 difference, Keith. Lowest in the middle bid.
So, you go with?
Well, we're looking at MSA and ISI. I got to go down to the conference room, we'll look at those two and talk to people, try to see which of those two are the best. We got the best outside lookout and full back position, which one's the best.
But in your packet that you got on Friday with the proposed budget, that's got those changes already involved in that. If you take time or have taken the time to look at your actual monthly financial reports, you should be around the 92% mark on, on revenues and expenditures. Our two biggest ticket items on general fund side and revenues is business license and franchise fees. We're still waiting on a franchise fee from Duke Energy. It should be here sometime this month. Usually comes mid to late June. Business license, we're still waiting there. I know Mr. Jim Wright has been busy doing business licenses. We're waiting on some more of those and from the permits or the business license payments that the municipal association collects on our behalf. We have not received that as yet, that we anticipate to receive by the end of this month. I also put in your packet a copy, or Lynn put in your packet a copy of a contract for Kenneth Cobby Company, the auditors that we've been using, I guess since the late 90s. Based on what I've read and what I remember when he submitted this to me back in March, nothing has really changed based on the previous contract. I think it is in there for a three-year period. It spells out what that company will do with our audit. I think it costs $19,000. I think around $19,000, $20,000 each year. Then depending on if he has to do additional work that's not in the normal day-to-day audit purposes, there could be some additional charges to what y'all desire to be with the contract for the auditor.
$19,000 this year?
Somewhere in that ballpark, yes, sir.
Is he going on a, are they asking for a contract or a year-by-year basis?
It is a three-year commitment.
That's what we usually do, is a three-year?
June 30th, June, yes, sir.
Is that an increase?
No, it's about the same.
Is that the market?
Bad, I don't think. That's probably about what we've paid for the last 30 years.
I'd hate to lose them, but at the same time, we probably have to look to at the market. I'm fine with him. I don't know the cost of, of costs. And the information we give him, if we'll give him that. I like a opinion. And it seems like we have to ask him for an opinion. And he's reluctant to give that until I read, and I read where he's not going to give an opinion on it. I want to be sure that, you know, that's what we pay him for. I like his opinion to some extent. And I know we're in good shape. No comparable differences. We aren't running deficits, but that's all I ask.
When you say when you ask for an opinion?
Well, you know, I almost felt like I dug into some extent, and I know I see deal too at times, where our weak points at, strong points at, and what, what are your concerns with this and all this?
Use and places to go. What we need to do, that's all I, case in point, you know, how much do we need water and sewage as a, as a appreciation number? What's a safe number for us to have with, you know, $20 million in assets? You know, what kind of appreciation money should we have put away to, you know, maintain accidents and emergencies?
I've talked to him about that, and we've discussed-
I'm not being critical, but-
Yeah, and, but if you wanted a true number, you'd have to get engineers involved to get into your pipe, your length of your pipe that you've had in the city, and all of that. I mean, we could tell you 10 million, we'd need 10 million in there, you know?
That's fine.
To start off, we talked about that, and I talked about that.
The only problem with that is is that we're going to have to have some, and I don't want to spend $100,000 figured it out, but you'd have to have some justification. When we talked to Peru about trying to fund that 10 B.
Normally your pipe is 50 years. For this pipe, we just, last year, didn't last five. So, that's our appreciation schedule, is on the pipes like different years.
What I'll do is I will, tomorrow we'll try to get some, two more quotes, go from there.
They'll be out, you know?
They, yeah, they would be scheduled to start working sometime in July doing stuff for us. At least that's what the auditor we have right now, they would start.
I'm not that happy with them, but I-
Yeah, understand.
I'd hate to be paying twice the market.
Understand. I will, we'll follow up with that, what that may be. That's not, and if, what we'll do is try to have that answer. We've got a, I've got a meeting scheduled with council for second reading on our budget, the 29th, I believe it is, of June, whatever the last Monday in June is, and we can bring that back at that time. We'll have that information. Also in your packet, there's a letter that was addressed to the mayor from PD Regional Transit Authority. Excuse me, Ms. Nancy Finkley, and representative of the city on that transit authority since day one, from my understanding. Her term expires this week. Her term is up for another two or three years, I think it says, for another three-year term. I have talked to Ms. Finkley. She's willing, if council is at the pleasure of having her to serve the next two, the next three years on this PD Regional Transit Authority.
I'm making notes. All favorits opposed?
The last thing I have is from the ATACs committee. Janet met with the local ATACs committee last week. There was $36,383 in that account that has to be used to promote tourism at the local level.
How much?
The Dillon County Theater requested $20,000. The ATACs committee recommends approval for $15,883.41.
About the most.
PD Tourism requested $10,000. The committee recommends that they receive $10,000. And then the city of Dillon Recreation Department requested $10,500, and they recommend approval for $10,500. Now, these three entities are the same three entities that apply for you year in and year out.
What is the theater spending?
Do you know what theater's using their money for?
Um, I guess the productions are costing.
Productions?
They've had a lot of changes there, Johnny. Brought to my kitchen from, wait a minute, I talked about this, the Dillon House.
Yeah, Dillon House did a lot of-
It's not an idea that they don't have any-
They've gone through a lot of changes, yes, sir. So, total request was for $40,500, but the committee recommends $36,383.41.
What do we normally get? We've got an increase of $10,000, you know what it is?
Park.
You did an increase of $10,000?
Last year, we gave about the same amount, $35,000, between the three and two.
Did the theater, did they request $20,000 last year?
They probably did. That's usually their normal. And what happens is each, each entity has to present a budget to let them know what they will spend it on. And then they make a recommendation that's left up to you seven to either agree with the recommendation or disagree with the recommendation.
Did we request accounting, something to do?
You don't have that due to-
It's a fault to you.
No, we don't get that. Now, we have to submit to the state, don't you?
I don't think so.
We have to submit to the state what they spending money on.
That's what it's talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we do that.
But the state does. The only, if the state sees something that they don't like, they need to come in and say, you know, this, this is not a prudential purchase or justify this purchase.
But this has been through the ATACs committee?
Yes. That's all I have at this point.
Okay, um, let me follow up on something I forgot about. I've talked to you or asked you about it a couple, about weeks ago. And what's the status of the house that burned on the?
Letters have been submitted to the property owner. They're in their last days of either gaining permits or he goes on to demolition or condemned, or the demolition, yeah. So, the owner has been contacted, has been sent a certified letter. You've got 60, 90 days, what is it?
We're on our last advertisement. We've got this Thursday, the last. Have they followed up with you or?
No, sir. No, sir.
I'm going to imagine that's going to be a little until this too.
And what's the date we're holding the state-based law?
July, starts July 17th. Runs from July 17th through the following Thursday, which I think is the 23rd.
17th through the 23rd?
Yes, sir.
Glad we got that. That's a really good thing. Okay. Citizens report, do you think anybody want to bring our attention up here now? With nothing, go to unfinished business. Order 15-5, sell a property owned by city of Dillon. This is the lot we own behind King's Pizza. And is this the second reading?
This would be the second reading, yes, sir. Second, final reading.
Anybody here wanting to comment on that? Any questions, any concerns? What's the sale of?
Forty-
Forty-two thousand.
Plus whatever legal cost is for closing and things of that nature. None of that's our cost.
I have one comment here. I was wondering what we're planning on doing with the money? What's we selling? Are we going to put it back in the general fund or what we planning on doing with the money?
Thought we talked about buying that land around 47,000.
That's a possibility. I don't think anything's been decided, but we just, I know that was a suggestion.
There's, there's nothing in the ordinance that, that says where the, if the money would be earmarked. If it's not earmarked, it'd just go into the general fund account.
Let me see, I've gotten, I've gotten probably three, maybe three phone calls, but I just want to be clear, can y'all help me? Our collection on this is wrong. That property had been up for bid before.
When there was a structure on it?
That's when it was a structure on it?
Yeah. When there was a structure. We had an offer of, Maggie, do you remember?
Yeah.
I won't think either 10 or, 10 or 12,000 dollars if I remember correctly.
And it's been for sale for approximately three years.
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark.
With, with no take, with no, to my knowledge, not money left. I just don't want any question on. Everybody had an opportunity for that. I can see where people want, where they need a green space perhaps, but that's why we're here, to make those decisions. I have a motion.
I make a motion. I stick it.
All favorits, all opposed? New business, order 15-06 adopting the municipal budget, which we just discussed.
Let me make a little change for that also. You mentioned the general fund, $5 million and some, some change, if we like to say. But once you add golf and wellness center into that, it brings it to 5.5 million, which you mentioned it in your budget ordinance. And then the actual water sewer is 3.6 million, 95 miles, which we've been at the same mileage rate for 20 years, seems like. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Well, I was just bringing back the figures we discussed in the budget workshop.
Yeah, that's right. That's correct.
Summarizing, it is unbalanced. We aren't running deficits. We aren't using reserve funds and anything like that. So, we are balanced.
One question before we get to a vote. The volunteer fire department, you said you want to talk to the fire chief?
It would be, Keith gave me that information last week, I put that equation down. If you increase, and I'm just using average numbers, before I give you that number. Keith, do you know what y'all average annually?
Fire calls?
Yeah. Which also includes, when we say fire calls, what we pay out, but on numbers, that includes classes and, and training and meetings, correct?
About, not counting, I was cross-tailing, looking at about 200 calls.
And if you use, I used 100 calls. If you use that, you've got, I think, four people who are categorized as firefighter one.
I think it's 12 or 13 that's, they've got eight 552s and four 550s.
So, that's 12 people. If you added $5 to each one of those per call, somewhere in this $5,000, $6,000 dish of money. And that's based on hundreds. So, he's talking 200, $10,000 to $12,000.
And we've got 17 that's going to get in the 550. Of course, it's Dillon, so if it's going to be this year first, next year, we should have, the majority should be middle of 550. So, I'm looking at, I bet 17 is going to have 10 or 12 more. First of the year, if they get in class, it could be 550.
So, it could be upwards to 15,000 to 20,000 additional dollars.
But if we go ahead, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I think that's something that we really need to look at for next year's budget. But I think it's something that is good thing, I think we need to incorporate those firefighters to improve their skills, because they put their lives on the line every time they do it. But I, I think it's a little late to be talking about it for this budget period, but we really should be putting it into the conversation for next year's budget.
Well, another question would be, I think you realize that we spend roughly $70,000 volunteer firemen pay. Of that $70,000, I don't know the breakdown of actual dollar amounts, but each one of them or some of them spend a night on the west side every night.
I think we've got about nine guys that have to stay across town on location.
We pay them per night, what, $60?
Four fire calls.
$60 a night to stay at that fire station. Do we want to include that into that?
I don't think that ought to be part of their extra pay. That doesn't need to be increased because they've got extra training. I mean, we're not, we're paying them to sleep there, not to, to fire.
They're actually acting as an engineer, that's what you're doing. So, if they go to the call, get paid for the calls as well, so.
Right. I mean, we don't need to pay them extra to sleep there.
No, I think that's just, that's just $60.
Right.
I think that's, for freight hours, half the eight hours a night, asking for four cars, four fire calls for it.
But I, I don't think that we really need to try to push that through in this year's budget. I think it's something we need to study and look at for, for next year.
If you lost five firemen, volunteer fire, five firemen, would it be difficult to replace those? I mean, do you have people coming wanting to do this service, or you got to go recruit them, or what?
We don't have many. We've got, we've got two or three now that's got access, put in to get on, and we don't have them locking that door when we go on to.
What's your private skill in that?
You know, the city fire department, 21 years of age, stay within the city limits, and get, get in the firefighter class. You're going to certify to get on, get in the firefighter class. Say it's one year, but we're trying to get two guys. We got one right now that's not certified. We have one in the county, trying to get them in that. We did ready to host 1152, probably first of all, so ones not certified to get in that. But all the pre-rex is, they're 21 years of age, have a good driving record, criminal history, and live in the city of Dillon.
One more question. How many of your firefighters do a dual job, work in the rescue squad too?
Because I'm a rescue and a firefighter.
Right.
Probably two-thirds.
Two-thirds of?
Cause volunteer rescue and firefighter.
Okay. I make a motion for the budget. We've got a motion, I have a second. All favorits, I propose. We discussed order 15-07 amending sanitation rates for 2015 and '16 this year. I make a motion. All favorits, I propose. Order 15-
Yes, sir. And on that ordinance, 15-07 sanitation rates, your, your rate schedule is attached to the-
Right. Y'all have it in mind.
Bessie, you have the eye adjustment.
Residential rates.
Put that in the paper.
50 cents. See how I think. A little more on the, two, two.
2% across the board.
Also in your packet, order 15-08 amending the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2015 and '16. That's actually 2%.
That was also a 2%.
50% across the board. I have a motion.
Motion.
I have a second. All favorits, I propose. Council member reports as well.
I just have a couple of things. I know that you're going to talk about Judge Carter is up for retirement. I'd like to know when we're going to plan on building a position and how we're going to transition with Judge to do the role of Judge Carter.
That would be, that would be something that is going to be discussed in, under the executive session on contractual matter, if that's okay. My, my goal to answer in, in public form here is for you folks to, because once again, Judge works for, for council, doesn't work for me. Y'all, y'all hired the judge, but I would recommend that we try to do something before the end of the summer, maybe have somebody in place early as October, so they can get involved and go ahead and start getting, because they got to be, or they have to go to school for X number of weeks and, and take a test. So, I would, I hope we can do that, and they get qualified to be a judge prior to Judge Carter retire. So, but we'll get into that a little deeper.
And Chief Rogers, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the promotion for the police department. I know that y'all had a test. Can you tell me actually what you're promoting, what, what positions?
We're going to promote a sergeant position, and seven or eight people took the test. Some of them took it so they won't have to take it later on, just for other positions. So, they've got that out of the way, and they won't have to retake it next time around.
So, you're saying just more position, sergeant position? So, you say just more position, sergeant position?
Ah, right now, there could be another.
That's all I got.
Only thing I have is I'm glad to see you're doing the pickings in the car for the police department. I think that's great. Congratulations on doing that. I think it's good public relations.
Especially with the atmosphere the way it is right now.
Absolutely.
And follow up on that, and I know we don't want the publicity, but Dillon Provision is providing the food, Pepsi provided.
Right, that's great.
We got community support of it and, and something we want to do, not just one time and say we've done something, but it's something that the police department wants to be involved in the community. So, that's one of the things.
City got a cooker or?
Mm-hmm. And the good thing is, is one of our rookie police officers came up with this. And, and that's great, that the younger police officers won't be involved in that kind of stuff, so that's a good thing.
That day, Friday, June twelfth?
This coming, this coming Friday, yes, sir. I can't remember times, but there'll be one done over by the making school area for a certain time. Once that time is expired, then they'll come over to Calvin Street here on Leith Avenue area, do it there. And I think you maybe go then into Harmon Park and then to Elizabeth Lane, but I don't know.
I thought it's on three parks.
That's four.
Four parks. So, they aren't gonna do it currently, or is it separate times?
Yeah, they'll do it separate times.
Separate times.
Update on J.K. Rich, so what's the status of his?
He's still under workers' comp.
I mean, how is he progressing?
I can't tell you about that.
Glenn, that property that we have sailing there, is that an entire space?
Yes, ma'am.
And on, um, third and Cal, third and, um, I think that's third and Calhoun. Where we put that, we put that, no parking sign. I mean, the next block down, the next two or three blocks down, there's a lot of young kids in there. You think we could get a sign for children that play?
The state won't put those up.
They won't.
No, ma'am. And I've asked, and I'll use the Wellness Center as an example. Could they put one up here in front of the Wellness Center, so put playground? They don't, they only put them up for school zones. And they won't allow us to put them up.
Not in the neighborhoods?
No, ma'am. And they won't allow us to put them up either because it's there right away. And, and they say caused with the liability issue. To me, the liability issue would be that you didn't do something, yeah.
Another short meeting.
I make a motion we go into executive session.
So, in the favor?
I.